There we go.
Oh.
We're live.
Okay.
Are you live?
We're good.
Okay, we call the meeting to order. We'll pledge our prayer.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you today praying to seek peace and prosperity for the city that we love. We pray in hopes that you give the governing body and city staff the wisdom to make wise decisions for the community. Please, God, use us as tools to best serve you. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Item C, approval of the agenda.
Item C, approval of the agenda. Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Citizen comments? Anybody from the audience that would like to speak on anything? Going once, going twice, none? Okay, move on. Item E. E1.
Honorable governing bodies, so Mr. Zimmerman, our fine council member, and his grandson, Christian Zimmerman, reached out to us about conducting an Eagle Scout project to paint the community building. As we all know, it's in rough shape, so after speaking with Brooke, we've kind of decided that it's a good idea to go ahead and throw a couple coats of paint on it and clean it up a little bit wherever we can. I know they did some estimates too, which I'll let him get into in his presentation, but we did some estimates, and we're estimating the cost around $1,500 to $2,000, material and everything, and that's also some scaffolding and harnesses so they can get up a little bit higher and paint the sides of that building. So with that being said, I'll introduce Christian Zimmerman.
Hello, I'm Christian Zimmerman. I want to propose my community center improvement project. We'll be trying to paint and make the community center a little more presentable again. We're thinking about this is gonna, you know, help the community and make it a little bit more, make it less of a eyesore for everybody. It's gonna be starting midsummer, and it will be completed mid to late summer. And some materials and supplies, we're thinking ladders, scaffolding, tarp, power washer, and hose systems, some smaller supplies, paintbrushes, primer, paint roller, paint trays, garbage bags, all that, all that stuff needed. And just to kind of keep everybody happy, we'll be asking for some hand sanitizer and some sunscreen. Material costs, we're thinking $300, supply costs $940, and the total, we're thinking Phases, we're thinking fundraising first unless the city pays for it, purchasing supplies and tools, recruiting volunteers, setting up equipment and organizing, sand, power washing, old paint, and property cleanup, painting of exterior, and tear down equipment and disminister. Any questions? Thank you for your time.
You must have a proud grandpa, huh? Only one question. Does your grandpa have to help?
Surprision.
I don't have any problems with it.
Brent?
What about a color change?
What kind of color are you thinking?
Something like a gray.
I don't, I have no opinion on it. I'm not a decorator or something.
Brian?
As the staff's chief representative here, I would say whatever color you so choose.
Okay, there we go. Honk it off again. Hot potato.
Are you talking battleship gray or are you talking?
Earth tone.
Earth tones.
Earth tones.
Could you do it to match the bathrooms that they did open the park when they were getting, we did the bathrooms at the park?
We can get some paint samples.
How many, is this just you, just the one scout?
No, it's gonna be 10 to 12 people.
Oh, okay, so you're getting some here. All right, fellas, awesome.
So do you need some of the equipment, like power washer and all that stuff? Do you need that? You need scaffolding?
Yes.
I can check on scaffolding for you, and I could definitely own the power washers that you can borrow.
The city has a power washer.
Oh, do you? Okay.
And what's the budget we want to approve it for? I've seen that it was...
I don't know if we need to make a formal recommendation. I think it's, we'll be under staff's authority, so we'll see what to approve a certain amount.
Do we want to approve a certain amount of the week?
Approve the project.
Approve the project.
Approve the project.
Well, I don't have any problem with it. I think this is awesome. What troop are you in?
776.
776, okay, awesome. Well, I was in 776.
Why didn't you paint there?
A long night weekend.
Had a third beer.
Well, do I have a motion?
I'd like to motion to approve the project.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed. Yes? Is staff directed to grab some color squashes for a change?
Aye, yeah.
Okay. I don't know if all the colors are gray or be available in paint that would go on aluminum, but we'll give what options we have.
Item F, approval of the consent agenda.
Take a look in a minute. Count table. Does anyone have any questions? Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item?
Item H1, point A through H1, point D, phase 1, boundary line adjustment, improvement, authorization, cleanup. Honorable mayor and city council, what we'll present here is a series of resolutions. I've broken them down into groups, so the first group that we'll present will be four. And these resolutions are essentially addressing the improvement resolutions that were authorized in 2019. And we'll use the same slides for the background and essential analysis, then with each resolution receiving a set of three slides each, including a map of the entire subdivision for Cloverleaf Farms. And then each of the resolutions that are being addressed will be presented in the order that they're presented in your packet. However, the reason we're doing the first four is because the initial improvements along Casado and Martins were authorized back in 2010 with Exhibit B in the staff report for ordinance 710, with the preliminary plat being approved for Cloverleaf addition on October 15, 2018, with the drainage plan approval occurring on January 21, 2015, and then the final plat approved by the city council on March 18, 2019. Now, the preliminary plat for Cloverleaf being approved on January 21, 2019, the developer then requested a respread of the initial improvement that was authorized with ordinance 710 to spread the cost across the lots that had just been platted. And that's Exhibit C in your agenda report for ordinance 830 that was approved on June 3, 2019. And what that did is that took the remaining 37.4% of that initial Casado Martins improvements that were approved with the assessment levy ordinance 710 back in July 19, 2010. What we have before you here is the list of the resolutions authorizing those improvements. Resolution 1919 for an 8-inch and a 10-inch water line with construction costs noted. Resolution 1920 for stormwater, 1921 for the 34-foot wide street and sidewalks, and resolution 1922 for the 8-inch water line improvement. The resolutions, and we'll keep hitting on this just for consistency so that folks understand why, is that because the boundary line adjustment occurred for drainage issues, that means that in order to adequately and sufficiently assess it evenly across the parcels that are affected, we need to essentially restate those improvement, the ordinances listed here. So that's what these first four resolutions are going to do. There is a small publication cost associated with the adoption of the resolution. The resolutions have been reviewed by city attorney Ryan Peck, constructed by bond counsel Kevin Callen, and approved us to form. And I'd like to thank Micah for crafting the map. This light gray area here is the phase 1 with this darker color being phase 2, and then this light sand earth tone being phase 3. Now, the dots that you see along the outside here are the lots that are impacted by the respread, or I'm sorry, the boundary line adjustment. And we'll address those here subsequently in these specific ordinances where we have everything from 20 to as few as four lots being impacted depending upon the improvement. The proposed resolution, H.1, point A, addresses, it essentially amends, restates, and repeals resolution 1919 for the construction of the 8-inch and 10-inch sanitary sewer improvements. The only noted change between what the resolution that you have before you for consideration in 1919 is that it specifically identifies the boundary line adjustments for the parcels noted as A through S, and again, restating that that boundary line adjustment occurred after those improvements were in place to accommodate changes to the drainage plan. It's recommended that the city council approve the resolution determining the advisability of making certain improvements in the city of Goddard, making the findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of these improvements in accordance with such findings, as well as amending, restating, and repealing resolution 1919. And that can be done with a voice vote. And that can be taken under consideration now if you so choose.
The rest of those houses, are there going to be complaints from them for having to respread that out?
No, these are already actually impacted. But what happened was, and Micah can state to it in greater detail if you require, essentially these lines were kind of shifted a bit in order to allow for adequate setbacks and footprint for the individual buildings because, or the individual homes, because we increased the detention capacity and flow surface here for this detention pond. And so when that occurred, there needed to be some adjustments because that's obviously common area.
Mr. Kelsey is fine with these changes?
Mr. Kelsey is the one who requested the change.
Awesome.
The boundary line adjustment was, cannot be approved in-house, so we had to bring it before the planning commission for the approval, and they approved it, I think it was 2020, at which point that was at the behest of the developer and Bopman, who was the one who represented in the middle at the time.
Well, I propose we adopt.
It's just, yeah, make a motion to approve the proposed resolution.
Okay, make a motion to approve the proposed resolution.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 21-15. And now we'll have the resolution restating, amending, and repealing 19-20. And essentially what this does is it addresses the stormwater drainage improvements. And the only change again is the lot description for that boundary line adjustment. And that's the recommended action to adopt the proposed resolution determining or authorizing the improvements.
Motion by Larry.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Resolution 21-16. And this one will address resolution 19-21, and it is for the 30-foot wide residential standard street and sidewalk improvements, and also impacting essentially four parcels A through D as stated in the resolution and staff report. So staff's recommendation is to approve the proposed resolution determining the advisability of making certain improvements in the city of Goddard, Kansas, and making certain findings with respect thereto, and authorizing and providing for the making of the improvements in accordance with such findings, and amending, restating, and repealing resolution number R.19-21.
I motion to do just that.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 21-17. And then our final item with respect to addressing the phase 1 boundary line adjustments, item H.1, point D, which essentially amends, restates, and repeals resolution 19-22 for the construction of an 8-inch water line. And this is, of course, described as parcels A through parcels S, with staff recommendation to be to approve the proposed resolution for making those improvements, and amending, restating, and repealing resolution number R.19-22.
Okay.
I motion to do that, please.
Motion by Michael. Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Resolution 21-18. Now, agenda item H.1, point E, is a resolution authorizing Cloverleaf Farms addition phase 2 water line improvements. So the next two resolutions that we consider will be the approval, essentially the authorization of improvements that we can go forward then. And the next agenda item following these two will be the award of the paving and waterline, with the final item being the issuance of, or the approval to proceed with the issuance and solicitation of bids for the temporary notes to finance the improvements. So what we would be looking to finance are these streets here that are in kind of a maroon color, contained within this darker gray phase 2, and all of the associated paving that you know here. The proposed resolution authorizes construction of the 8-inch water line that we highlighted on the map at an estimated cost of $195,000 with an estimated 1% per month escalator. We do not anticipate that occurring as we'll be coming back with the temporary note placement documents in May. But essentially, it's impacting the lots stated 41 through 56, block A, lots 12 through 26, block B, and again, essentially takes all of those parcels as identified in your staff report and spreads the cost of those improvements across 1/46th of those lots. And again, stating that the cost of the improvements 100% financed by the improvement district and zero by the city at large. The resolution issues us to proceed with some of the preliminary for the associated bond costs, and then it's effective upon adoption and will be published in the Times Sentinel. As such, there's a small publication cost associated with it. It's staff's recommendation to approve the proposed resolution for making those improvements and findings for the water line improvements for Cloverleaf Farms addition phase 2.
I'll make that motion.
Second by Sarah, second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, passes.
Resolution 21-19. And at this paving, so I apologize for that. And again, we're discussing the items contained within here, and obviously the maroon is the paving section, and with phase 3 being this purple on that back, earth tone sand It authorizes the 30-foot wide residential standard pavement, as well as a cul-de-sac with an estimated cost of $489,000. The cost is 100% financed by the improvement district, zero by the city at large. There is obviously the publication cost as we saw with the last resolution, and it's staff's recommendation that you propose the proposed resolution findings that authorize and provide for the making of these improvements in accordance with the, and I screwed that up because it's paving improvements for Cloverleaf Farms phase 2.
I motion to approve as proposed.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, I guess we double tapped, and that's why. Resolution 21-20. So, because this is the paving. The bid award. So what we're, what we're bidding here is awarding the bid to, is this maroon line contained within the darker gray. There were four bids received. I think I put five in the staff report, but there were four, with the lowest bid being Kansas paving in the amount of $298,303, with the next lowest bid being $299,341.60. Both of these bids are with, well under the engineer's estimate of $361,763. Again, this is in accordance with the state's special assessment process as petitioned by the property owner receiving the benefits.
Kansas paving, can Asher deal with this time?
They're the lowest bidder, yes, sir.
Deal with the other development, all of the street and sidewalks. We're comfortable with this one? Or do we really have any control over it?
They were the lowest bid, yes, sir.
Sounds good.
I motion to award lowest bid.
Motion by Michael. Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Item H.1, point H, Cloverleaf Farms, phase 2. Said paving, but it's water. You can tell, I got all of these documents Friday afternoon at 3 o'clock, so I think it shows. The water line improvements are contained within the frontage of the roads here, just like all of our other subdivisions, and it's within that gray area. Bids for all improvements were received on April 8. Five bids were received. The lowest bid was, lowest responsible bid, I should say, was meese construction in the amount of $139,336.75. And that would be staff's recommendation to award the bid for water line improvements to meese construction in that amount.
I motion to award the bid.
Motion by Michael, second by Larry. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Item H.1, point I is the Cloverleaf Farms phase 2. It's the authorizing of financing for the paving and waterline improvements. And again, it takes everything for water and paving within that dark gray area there. This adheres to the state's special assessment and temp note process, so the resolution proceeds with an estimate of $489,000 for the water line improvement, and, I'm sorry, for paving, and $195,000 for the water line improvement. It selects Stiefel Nichols as our underwriter for the temporary notes. It authorizes our bond counsel, Gilmore and Bell, to proceed with the construction of a preliminary official statement in conjunction with Stiefel Nichols and staff. The series would be noted as 2021-2. The issuance not to exceed $760,000. That also is with capitalized interest and a true interest cost not to exceed 2%. It authorizes the mayor, city administrator, chief financial officer, and clerk to prepare the necessary city documents for the preliminary official statement, as well as all of our documents necessary for the municipal securities rulemaking board rule G.32, and to undertake those actions necessary to carry out the sale of the notes, which again, will come back to the city council for consideration in May to finalize that sale with a resolution and ordinance. And again, this is being brought to you in accordance with the approved property owner petition, and it will be financed through the issuance of temporary notes that will ultimately be rolled into special assessments as petitioned by the property owner when those temporary notes reach maturity. It's staff's recommendation that you approve the proposed resolution authorizing the offering for sale for the general obligation temporary notes, series 2021-02, for street and waterline improvements related to Cloverleaf Farms addition phase 2.
I'd like to approve as proposed. Motion to approve as proposed.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Now I'll turn it over to Micah.
Honorable mayor and city council. Quick background, Bopman Company has applied for considering a replat application for the devastates second addition inside of a property zone planned unit development or PUD. This property was approved for a PUD in July 2018. The new proposed plat falls within the guidelines of the existing PUD, so no new site plan needs to be considered for this development. All plats must be approved for both a preliminary and a final plat, with the final plat being approved by the governing body, which is what you'll be considering today. The governing body will be considering a final plat on this agenda item. The governing body will be considering a final plat on this agenda item. Next slide. Eventually, there it is. The proposed replat, this is kind of a reiteration, the proposed replat falls within the PUD and is not deviating from the parameters. The PUD is a zoning classification that was approved by the planning commission, and so if there was a deviation in terms of the PUD extending passage geographic boundaries that are approved originally, or if the square footage that was defined within that PUD exceeds what was originally proposed, or if the overall parameters of the PUD change in such a way it would need to be revised by the planning commission. The final plat, considering replating the Devil State's patio homes, so all final plats have to be approved by the governing body. That's why you're being, considering even a replat. Utility and drainage plans have been approved by the city engineer and public works director subject to provisions of additional information. This is the original plat, and this is what's being proposed. If it will click. There it is. So big changes, you had one lot here and one big lot here. There used to be about 35 patio homes on one lot. Now it's one big lot here, the two memory care centers being right here, and now 31 patio homes will be around this area here. We do have Pat Bauer of Baughman Company here representing the developer, Paul Kelsey. If there are any questions, feel free to ask them.
Pat, if you don't, where do you go? There you are. Paul's the developer?
Say it again.
Paul's the developer?
No, not Paul Kelsey, I'm sorry.
Steve Silas.
Steve Silas, thank you. Steve Silas is the developer. Baughman's representative, Steve Silas.
Good evening. Pat Bauer with Baughman Company. So Steve is looking at doing this replat, and really, we're just trying to, we've reduced the number of lots, really trying to account for some building templates that he's looking at and a little bit bigger homes. So if there's any questions, I could try to answer.
Do you know what kind of size these places are going to be, like bedroom, bathroom?
He is looking at some three-bedroom, three-bath.
Okay.
So, I mean, around 2,000 square feet are some of the homes. A lot of these lots are kind of sized for these bigger homes. So just kind of seems to be the demand, two bedrooms aren't as popular as three.
Right.
Are these patio, are they patio homes?
They are patio homes. So, no basements.
Just for retirement, then, or what are they?
It is for an older age group. I would say, you know, not people with children and stuff like that, but I don't know if it's going to be limited accordingly on the PUD. I don't know if there's an age limit as far as that goes.
There's no age restriction on the PUD?
There's no.
Yeah. And PUD preliminarily is just going to define land use?
Yes.
Steve does a pretty good job. He did all the inside work and insides of the state, did all the villas, I believe, as well.
He also did the memory care facility, I think he did Bang and Chalk.
Really good job.
He's built too. My sister's houses and remodeled my parents', so.
Yeah. So he's, I think he's got a good layout and really trying to make a good, good concerted effort on this one.
Well, what do you guys think? It's an old private road. I think I've already asked you that.
Yeah, and that's something we can reiterate a little bit. This is all going to be private, except they're going to want us to take over the water mains and the sewer mains. So the roads are going to be private, and they're going to be managed by HOA, and the agreement is that if we have to do any maintenance on these easements that cross through the development for the water and sewer, the street maintenance that has to happen to remediate after we fix the water main or sewer will have to be covered by the HOA costs. So if we have to dig up the main to get to it to fix it, and we have to dig up a road, then that road's going to be repaired by the HOA costs and not by the city. So we're just going to be taking responsibility for the sewer and the water. Everything else.
Do they have access points in the center of those houses where if we were to need to get back there, I can hardly see the floor. Like, would we get a truck back there?
There is a, there is a access to that, that small reserve area in the back from the west side of the private road. There is a 20-foot utility easement abutting that, so we've got sewer, we've got sewer back there, and we're working with the electric company and utilities to locate on the backside. Otherwise, water's going to be along the, along the street, along the private street.
More utilities in that easement than just us, or is it just us?
In the center area, we're working with Evergy to try to keep the electric on the backside of these lots, on the back of the properties. And in the front, we're looking at Kansas Gas and Water. We're looking at Kansas Gas on one side of the private road, water on the other. So, we're trying to keep the electric boxes in the backyard, not in the front yard. Sanitary sewer is also going to be going around the outer periphery, and then we do have a sewer main today that goes over, and we just got a leg that comes over and picks up those homes that are in the center block, so.
My concern is that you don't have electric plate on top of the water line or something.
Right, and we, that's why we've got a 20-foot easement to try to get some separation. Keep in mind, the sewer's relatively shallow because these are daylight basements, so the sewer's not 10, 11-foot deep. We're looking at seven to eight-foot of depth tops for the sewer. So, because we don't have to account for basements.
What's Phil's wife's name?
Don't know that answer. And I've seen her, I've seen them all the time.
It was her birthday today, so.
I know, and that's why I'm here. So, but.
That's why you got the job.
That's right, that's right. So, I just know of her as the boss.
The boss.
Of the boss.
Okay. Well, I don't have any questions. You guys?
Well, I motion to approve as proposed.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Brent. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you for your consideration.
I appreciate it.
Honorable Mayor and Council, item H.3 is 2021 Street Maintenance Bid Award. Little background, city's best practices indicate that street pavement preservation application should occur every five years on each city roadway. In 2011, the council adopted the Goddard Pavement Rehabilitation Plan with the goal of doing, of rehabbing each street every five years. Here is the plan itself. It starts at the beginning of when the street is constructed, and it kind of lays out a groundwork, three years. We look at crack seal, possibly a slurry seal or an asphalt penetrator or another type of seal such as Onyx. And as the road gets older, the maintenance gets more and more progressive up into the point where we would do a total rehabilitation. Right now, the current city RFP calls for bids for 40,000 pounds of rubber for crack and seam sealing. Rubber is bid on the pound scale, not on the feet of linear cracks you have. So the plus with that is if we have more cracks than we have listed on the, if we have more rubber than the streets that we initially have designed to fill, and we have cracks that can handle rubber, they will go ahead and fill additional cracks. If we fill everything up and we don't use all 40,000 pounds, we don't pay for all 40,000 pounds. So that's one, one section of this RFP. The other called for microsealing of select streets. Microsealing that we're talking about was like a Reclamite or an Onyx. It's a non-aggregate sealant that basically rejuvenates and extends the life of asphalt that's in already decent shape, good shape. Second part of this item, city staff solicited bids for repair of a damaged 1,875 square-foot section of streets in paid addition at the corner of Cindy and Fifth. That is an area where the streets are in actually really good shape, but for some reason there was some, some base damage or something under the base that caused that to soften up a little bit, and heavy trash truck going over there routinely has, has broken it up, and it needs to be addressed. Further than these maintenance items, we, as we've talked about in prior meetings, we have other roads that need full rebuilds, but those are capital improvement projects, and those are things that we plan years in advance, you know, make sure we have the funding and do those major repairs. Here's some maps of the streets that we're, that we are having work done on. Walnut Street from Kellogg down to Santa Fe will be seam sealed and crack sealed, and it will have an Onyx applied, which is, which is a, a microsealing technique. And the reason we have chose that street to do an Onyx is because that's relatively new asphalt, and we want to keep it in as good a shape as possible for as long as possible. I think we're locked up here, Thatcher.
That's the other way, too.
Ah, thank you. And Elbridge, we're going to hit crack sealing all along all of Clearstone. A lot of these, their cul-de-sacs are in pretty good shape, so we are not going to hit them unless we have additional rubber left over. And this is Old Town, South Old Town. Again, we're going to crack seal Walnut. We're going to hit some of these streets that didn't have the slurry seal done to them and needed crack sealing. North Old Town, you'll see the streets, paid addition. We're going to do a complete Onyx seal or microseal of it, as well as the repair in, right there at Craig and Fifth.
Third Street, sorry to stop you. Third Street's a full buildout. Is that what you told me last time?
Yes.
Third Street, yeah.
And then, of course, we've got Seasons, St. Andrew, Spring Hill, and we're going to hit a little bit over in Hopper. The streets there were not terrible, but we're going to hit, because of crack sealing in on both ends of that. The 2021 Street Maintenance RFP was posted to the city's online bid tab and emailed to 10 prospective bidders. Local company Circle C provided the loan bid totaling $88,171.50. That's for the rubber for, and crack sealing and for the microseal. We also solicited quotes from five prospective bidders for a repair of the damage I spoke of on Fifth and Cindy Street. Circle C provided the best bid there of $12,000 for that repair. The next closest bid on that was $36,000. Total cost for maintenance and this repair, these repairs are $100,171.50. This year, there's $200,000 budgets for, for street maintenance projects. This is the first set that I want to bring. We are also have several utility cuts around town, which is where we've had to cut into the roads, do water repairs, and we've filled them with AB3 in the interim, but we're going to go out for bid for those as well. Hopefully, within the next 60 days, we can send to the council on that. Total cost of $100,171.50. It would be allocated to the Special Highway Street Fund. Any questions?
Is that rubber, is that a liquid rubber then?
No, it comes in on pallets, and it is big, heavy blocks of rubber, and they put it in a melter and melts it down to a certain temperature, and they blow out the cracks and they fill it with rubber, with a big wand. And it's literally rubber. I mean, I don't know if you can offer any more on that, Harland.
It's, yeah, rubberized asphalt. That's what it is, yeah.
Well, I'd like to show some appreciation to Chad for coming in so low and saving the city some money.
He definitely did come in low, and I asked him to be here tonight if he wanted to be. Apparently, he chose not to be, so. But, you know, we, going back to the, two years ago, we had this slurry seal situation that everybody was concerned with, and Chad and I have spoke at length about that more than once, and he assures us that we're not going to have those issues again, and I, and I believe him. He's, he's worked really hard to regain our confidence, and I, and I have full confidence in it.
Didn't they used to shove some sort of air or something in there and then tar them a lot of time, or the cracks?
In the cracks, where they blow them out, and, and in our specs, it even said, I use the same spec city Wichita does, the depth of the crack below, how deep they blow the crack out has to do with how wide it is and things like that, and they'll literally blow all the dirt out and put that, that rubber, melt that rubber right in there. And there's no tar or anything, it's, it's the rubber. Any additional questions? Thomas?
I would like to motion to approve as proposed.
Motion by Michael.
Second.
Second by Sarah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Item H.4, quarter, quarter one, 2021, annual departmental reports. Honorable Mayor and Council, the reports before you are based upon the activity over the first three months of 2021. The objectives and goals that are presented by the departments are based upon the community's vision statement, which is Goddard, a vibrant community, growing and accessible, the destination for a family-oriented active lifestyle. With the mission of the city organization being to work cooperatively and efficiently to provide a vibrant community that is growing and accessible for our neighbors. We aim to be a destination for a family-oriented active lifestyle. And then the values that the city team put together, people first, stewardship, solution-oriented, collaborative, efficient, and effective. We utilize a strategic cycle that's based upon the statements, the community vision plan that was completed in 2014, as well as the comprehensive plan that is revised and updated in accordance with state law every 10 years. From that, we develop our priorities that are driven by the governing body's priorities. And then from there, they're broken down into specific programs and projects, and then obviously, the city team at the employee level is evaluated on the success of these three here, and then it's just literally a feedback loop, including the resource allocation and the budget process. Administration, we processed, I'm having trouble reading that, sorry. We processed 35 agenda items in the first quarter of 2021. We had two ordinances, 13 resolutions. There were five cereal malt beverages that were approved, cereal malt beverage licenses, two liquors, liquor licenses issued, the fireworks sales permit, and then again, what we're looking at is the, the invoices for compliance mowing for code violations. We had 348 for a total submitted to the tax rule of $414. We also had 417 pages worth of briefing materials over those six agenda sessions that we generated for you and the public's review. First quarter of 2021, we paid a total of $1,766,421. There were 479 invoices, and we issued 314 checks. Utility billing, water and sewer customers were up 6% over the previous year for the same period. 1,925 water customers, 1,853 sewer customers. We had $34,289 in outstanding account balances that were unpaid. $5,700 of that was moved to bad debt, and we have 223 uncollected bad debt that was sent for set off. We did process through the COVID agreement balance roll, $1,249. And then at the bottom here, we're showing you the, the number of water customers on the left in blue and sewer customers in red, and you can see how, again, they're, they're just on an upward trend. And the good thing about this is, as we'll discuss further in May when we go to look at the utility rate reduction, not only through the refinance of debt that, that we recently closed on, when we present the new rate ordinance for review and comment in May in consideration at the second meeting, one of the things to note is we won't project them out going forward, but we are able to spread that debt burden across more users. And then obviously reassess every two to three years as we experience this growth, so that way we're able to continue to reduce the impact of those fixed debt costs onto our utility customers and neighbors. Municipal court, we had 1,342 jail fees in 2021 compared to our high in recent past compared to, uh, our high in recent past being, uh, twenty nineteen where we had six thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars worth of inmate fees for the quarter. Uh, we issued twenty warrants, which is about average for the period and we, uh, had eleven dismissals and, uh, three diversions. Again, relatively in line with, with, uh, recent numbers. Uh, we have thirty-one full-time employees with, uh, two hundred and seventy-five vacation hours being used, two hundred and forty-six hours, we had twelve COVID hours and four hundred and thirty-eight overtime hours, which is, all of those numbers are less than what we've historically experienced. Are there any questions over administration at this time? And with that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
I'll turn it over to the captain.
Set my timer here. All right. Obviously, this is quarterly report. Uh, you can see here with our caseload at, just for this quarter, it was one sixty-one, um, of the traffic citations that we wrote, well, I should say, a hundred and thirty-seven traffic citations were written in that, uh, three-month period with a hundred and eighty-five being warnings. Twenty-six arrests, two hundred and sixty-three building checks, thirty-seven, uh, public or positive community contacts. I'm sure there was more than that, but that's just how many that made it to the guys' red sheets. Eighteen motor assist and twelve alarms. For the dog calls on the right, there were twenty-four total animal calls that we responded to and seven of them were just animals running at large. We had no bites or neglects or vicious. I will tell you that that will be a different number for quarter two. There's the, uh, case numbers broken down into offenses that we, uh, are gonna show you there. Four ag assault batteries, three sex crimes, um, two of which we actually referred over to the, uh, EMCU, the Exploited Missing Children's Unit for investigation. Uh, we had no auto thefts for the first quarter, six thefts, um, zero burglaries reported to us, seven DUIs, that's a big increase for that quarter and quite a few of those, we didn't go looking for, they came to us. Six financial fraud cases, twenty-four assists to outside agencies, um, seven drug cases and five warrant arrests. Nineteen crashes in this first quarter with, um, nine of them just being on US-54. Most of the cra- all of them but one were, all, all but two, I should say, were, um, non-injuries. So that's good. Uh, we didn't really have much community involvement as far as outreach and programs and community contacts, just mostly because of still in, uh, the flu season and the first part of the year. Um, we got a couple of ends coming up and we've already started in the national night out planning, so we're, a couple of us are involved in that. Holy Spirit Catholic Church held a fundraiser last year and, uh, one of the prizes was an opportunity to be a chief for a day, so it was a, a good fundraiser for them. The winner of that, we, uh, are working with their parents to get that scheduled when, uh, it's a little, um, more appropriate and maybe, huh, acceptable for us interacting and being in close, close proximity and bringing people from the community into the police department that don't necessarily need to be there to report a crime or such. I can actually give you some other stats if you're, if you didn't, uh, look over the actual report that I put out, um, some things that are kind of significant to mention, we had, uh, two guys from the department go to a forty-hour meteorological death investigation class, so, um, that was very insightful to them. Uh, one guy went to twenty-two hours of a field training course. We had three officers go to a Glock Armory course. Um, one officer went to four hours of dementia awareness and, uh, two other, actually, three of the officers are now radar certified, so, um, they will be having that opportunity to, uh, have enforcement and education. Uh, we're short one staff member, uh, so we are still looking to hire. Unfortunately, the applicants aren't coming in, or the, the quality of applicants that are worthy of moving on farther in the process are not really coming in. We had, uh, I think, I don't know if I mentioned on that first slide, a hundred and sixty-one total dispatched, or total cases and then dispatch calls for this quarter were three hundred and sixty-seven. Kinda do the math, that's at least four a day. Self-initiated calls were six hundred and seventy-seven, so that includes officers going out, making their own traffic stops, making, um, building checks, contacting, uh, individuals, doing such things as like, uh, uh, when someone comes in and, and wants their car seat checked, things like that. Um, we have two more, um, department staff members who are going to attend a, uh, future car seat check, um, certification course, so we'll have three certified car seat installers. That will be really, really helpful to the community and parents who are looking to make sure their kids are safe. Just a couple other little things to make of, of interest here. Just in this quarter, we had three, I kinda put together kind of three significant cases we had. We had a, one call where it was a disturbance, turned into a, an actual kidnapping with an ag assault, ag- with an attempted aggravated battery with a vehicle. In March, we had, uh, two calls. One of them was a child abuse by a father against his fourteen-year-old daughter and on March ninth, we also investigated a rape case. So, um, those are kind of just some highlights of some of the cases and calls we had. That is all I have. Do you guys have any questions?
Um, do you have any of the bike school this summer?
Um, there, right now, there are only two certified bike riders. One of them is me, the other one is Sergeant Circle, both of which are very busy at the, uh, with lots of stuff in our pots. Um, we, uh, we will try to and we've discussed it already. One other thing I was gonna mention, uh, we do have both vehicles, not on the street, but both vehicles that were on patrol already, they're painted with white doors, so those are gonna be out there looking sharp pretty quick. All right?
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
We brought lots of visuals this time. I know. Kinda brought Carrie. So, anyway, we will get started. Honorable Mayor and Council, um, our big thing increase was three hundred percent over twenty nineteen with the number of programs. Obviously, I started in quarter two of twenty nineteen, so, um, that was before I said that. Anyway, we've come up, a lot of that is because Carrie, who I brought with me, um, she's, uh, working hard to get all that going, so, um, and all of our numbers are going back up from our lows in twenty twenty, so that's good. I'm gonna go over some of, some of our, what we're kinda looking for in the next quarter and then Carrie's gonna go over our programming for this quarter. Um, we got summer reading coming up, so we've gotten a lot of great, almost eight thousand dollars worth of prizes to get out from local businesses, um, and that's with coupons for Dairy Queen and stuff like that. Um, we've, we're trying to get our garden project off the ground, which we did receive a five hundred dollar grant, so we'll be starting that. And then we already have a Girl Scout troop that's gonna be working in there with that for, um, most of the summer. Um, we are getting more donations for our early literacy kits, what's Carrie brought, that, we brought mouse paint to show you today. And so they're an early literacy multisensor kit, basically it's storytime in a bag, so, all kinds of neat activities. Um, Carrie will be visiting the schools to promote summer reading and I will be visiting to, um, the art classes at the middle school to get a, uh, mural started in the library that'll be done, should be done mid-May, in May. Um, and then Carrie's gonna be working with Launchpad Learning, which is just across the street from us, um, doing storytimes and then we're gonna do some, um, programs with their school-age kids this summer, so, um, and I'm gonna let Carrie talk. There's more slides, but you're gonna talk about the partnerships.
I can, yeah. You may talk about these partnerships.
Yeah. So we, um, part of, uh, we spend a lot of time is going and pe- speaking with people, organizations and businesses to, um, help us with donations, uh, money or items. Um, fostering and nurturing these relationships does take a lot of time. Um, we are very thankful for the support that we have of the community and we cannot do that with, do all, half of our program without their support. These are some of our partnerships that we have right now that have helped us with our early literacy kits as well as our DISC off as well. We have an entire separate group of partnerships just for our summer reading. Um, TNT is one, um, Allstate Insurance, uh, T-Mobile is actually going to be sponsoring our kickoff as well. Um, and so it's just, I'm always very thankful for those, um, partnerships that helps us bring in more bigger programs, uh, just different speakers and things like that. So, these are some, um, story walks. Um, this is our new story walk that's out at Tanganika. As you can see, even the Penguins are enjoying our story walk. Um, these have been really popular with our patrons. We put it up and that day I had people sending me pictures of their kids saying, the new story walks up, so, um, they were really excited. So this is one at Tanganika and then where I'm holding the sign is out here at Linnor Park and so those are always great for our patrons to enjoy and to get active and also enjoy a cute little story. So, we didn't stage that Penguin, he went up on his own. I'm completely serious.
Tanganika sent us those.
Tanganika. So they were out and about and the, the Penguin went up to the Little Penguin story and he was enjoying it as well, so I didn't stage that, I promised, so. So that's our story walks, those are always neat and cool, always looking for fun books. Um, we also hosted a salad in a jar class, we got a grant for that to do all the supplies. Um, it was through Abducare, I don't know if you know, that's kind of a healthy wellness program, uh, one of our patrons, she does that and so we purchased the jars, I purchased all the supplies that go in them and I portioned everything out for the patrons. They came and picked it up and then we got on virtually and we made, I think they got five jars for the week and they got to make these fun salad in jar things. Um, we had a great time, as you can see, there were some kids that are participating, so it was tons of fun. Um, they're already asking when the next one is. The hope would be eventually that we can have these in person, cause it's usually how it works is that each person brings something, cause see, I prepped everything for, for all those people. Um, but usually, um, each person brings a different supply and then we kinda like share those ingredients and then they make the jars together. So, we also hosted a team painting thing over spring break, we did Harry Potter, as you can see. I think we had six or seven, was it seven? Yeah, six or seven, um, teens that came. Teens is probably the hardest group right now to do programming for because everything has been virtual, um, most of them have been taking virtual school and so they're not really interested in joining in something virtual at the library. But hopefully this summer, we do have some cool, um, programming that's gonna happen and it will be in person, it'll be limited, but they will be in person, so hopefully we can get our teen group back and going, um, cause before we had the shutdown, we had about fifteen to twenty kids that were participating in our teen activities, so hopefully we can get that going. But the teen, the teen painting, um, has been fun, um, we get those kids to paint the town and they're pretty much, um, they can do them on their own, it's just more of a time to interact. I don't even paint anymore, cause I'm more of a painter, so that's not one of my talents, so, um, but yeah, so we had fun with that. What else we got? Oh. Okay, um, the early literacy multisensor kits, um, these was, uh, these were a project that I came to April with, um, just a dream that I had, um, that I really wanted to see these happen and I said, I know it's gonna take like six months to probably get these going and by the next day she had like four kits sponsored for me. So, um, the project went quicker than I thought it was going to and we're up to eleven, eleven kits. Um, I kinda call it my brain in a bag because these are a way to extend storytime and reading with, um, your kiddos. A lot of parents, I forget because my background is early childhood, that people, like, what do I do with my kids? Um, do I read, when I read a book to them, what else can I do with them? So these kids give an opportunity to extend that storytime or an activity with their kids. Um, there are at least two books in there, usually a CD, some kind of flannel board and a couple games to participate. We are rotating these through the preschools, Reliance Community Church has one, uh, TAC Early Literacy has one, uh, Kinsler Elementary, their preschool has one as well. Um, Launchpad will get one, uh, we just put them out on the shelf today and one was already checked out, so they are super fun for our families. Twelve to Read Challenge is, if you've ever heard of like Read Wichita through the Wichita Public Library, this is kind of the same concept of reading, reading twelve different books in a year and usually they're different categories. And so ours is Read Goddard and so in our Beanstalk app that we got last year for our summer reading programs, you can register for this challenge and it encourages you to read all year and to read books in different categories. At the end, if you complete the challenge, you'll get a certificate as well as a prize. Um, one thing that we would encourage you all as city council is if you wanted to participate, we could also promote you reading a book and putting you over our social media to encourage people to read and that you are participating in our Twelve to Read Challenge. So if you're interested in that, we would love that.
And then we got the, the desk is lower.
Oh yes, our desk is lower, which is awesome because we can actually see our patrons and they can see us, plus their, when we have our little kids in as well, it's not so high. I'm so used to it now, I forgot that it was high. So yeah, so yes, all right, so it's been lowered, yeah. Yeah. Yes, um, yeah.
Yeah, Brett.
Brett, yeah, his crew came over and helped with it, so it looks really.
Put it together, yes.
Looks really nice and we can see people when we're checking out.
It's much easier to, for them to see us, too.
Yes, it looks like a real circulation.
Do what?
Still looks big in the picture though.
Oh yeah, it's the same size, yeah, yeah.
Well, it's not tall.
Tall.
But honestly, it opened it up when you walk in. Yeah, you haven't been in to see it yet, Brett.
I, I know.
You did.
There you go. Can we go with this?
I don't know. No. Okay, that's it.
Any questions?
You can go tomorrow.
You can.
Is your, uh, electrology of books or is that something you're increasing now too?
Oh yeah, well, we've, yeah, we've, because we're in the consortium, the state consortium with all of that, um, so when we purchase, we purchase for the whole state and when other libraries purchase, they purchase for the whole state, so that collection's pretty big, I think thirty-five thousand unique titles is what are, what's in there and it's not just eBooks, it's e-audiobooks as well. Um, and so when people sign up for cards and come in, we always give them the, we have, we have another brochure that talks about, um, doing the eBooks and the audiobooks and how you sign up and stuff, so, and we get, we have some that. That's all. That's all they want and so they'll call and get a card and they say, we just wanna use the e-library, so.
So do you have to supply them or, or whatever?
Nope. They use their phones, yep. Use their phones or their own devices, so. We have Kindles for checkout, but honestly, we haven't checked one out for quite a while, so.
No, Larry, when are you gonna go read Dr. Seuss over at the library? I think, yeah. I've been looking for my sister a lot, but I found some of those books in her. Yeah.
We have three of them, we took off the shelf because people were stealing them from libraries and selling them on eBay. Yeah, the ones that they, they aren't gonna, yes.
We didn't remove it because of that, we just removed it because we were afraid people were gonna.
Yeah, we were afraid they were gonna get stolen, so they're on the back shelf right now until, until that, that kinda stops, so. I know. It's like, hey, two thousand dollars for Dr. Seuss, yeah.
That's a great idea.
Thank you ladies.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Twenty twenty-one Public Works First Quarter Report. Our by-the-numbers is not so much different, um, this quarter from first quarter last year, we did a substantial amount more pothole repairs. We did quite a bit more lane sweeping because of the amount of sand salt we had to put down due to the cold weather and the storms. Um, we are, we are sneaking down on our meter reads. We still have about fifty of the meters to put in the ground, we're moving slow on those because meters are difficult to get with the pandemic and we don't want new construction to go without. So until the new meters come in, we're not putting every one of those in the ground. Our water consumption, um, used is up about three million gallons, a little, little over three million gallons. And our average daily inflow at the plant is up from four hundred and five thousand to four twenty-two. Um, first quarter, we were, we were really busy, the cold snap taxed us in anything that could freeze, did or tried to, that kept the guys on their toes and they were out day and night. There was a portion there where Mike Holmes, our, um, head water operator, had to literally stay twenty-four hours so we could manually turn the wells on to keep the tank and tower full because our equipment froze. That turns all those, all that information on. So, um, a lot of hard work from the crew during that cold, cold. So a lot of hard work from the crew during that cold spout. Some of our projects in advance, the southeast corridor lift station was brought online early in January and it's, it's a nice piece of equipment. We mitigated a drainage issue in St. Andrews fourth phase. We replaced a damaged traffic signal control box at US 54 and 167. That was a situation where either a, somebody ran into a county or city mower, or not city, sorry, we don't know that county or state.
Somebody with a large device.
A large device and they, they damaged a $10,000 stainless steel box.
Without telling us?
Yeah, without telling anyone and one day we just went out there because the police plate readers were offline and we found out it was all dented up and it was, yes. So that was one of the projects that we.
So I can send Laura Kelly a bill? Is that what you're saying?
If I could prove who did it, I would send a bill. I guarantee you that man. It doesn't matter who the person was. If I knew who did it, I would send them a bill. I promise you that. Well 7 was pulled and inspected and diagnosed for a malfunction that it was occurring while it was under load. That is ongoing. We'll be probably bringing some information to council on that in the near future. We're working with KDHE and Clarkwell to look at our options on that. Parks, we rehabbed and painted the playground equipment at Means Park. If you like a fast merry-go-round, go try it. We put new bearings in there. It screams now. I mean, people are hanging on and spinning it. It's, it's a lot of fun. Even the guys working on it had to get on there and spin it to try it out after. Yeah, it, it, it's pretty quick. We renewed our mowing contract. We've got a different company doing our mowing. They started a couple of weeks ago and they seem to be doing a fair job. We'll stay on top of it, make sure everything goes good, but so far, so good. And we began preparation of the pool complex for opening and we are only barely into the second quarter now and we've got that thing filled, clean, painted, filled, and we're conditioning it. So whenever it's time to open, it'll be ready to go.
Just in time for the snow.
What's that?
Just in time for the snow tomorrow.
Just in time, but you know, that's no.
Hold our plunge.
We're in a pole, pole very close. On the water drainage side, we cleaned, we had, I shouldn't say we did it. We had the above-ground storage tank cleaned and inspected. Something else that the guys did a great job on is we came, we had a substantial water loss in February. What we do every month is we look at how much water we pumped, how much water we've sold. And anything other than that is a loss. And we try to keep it below 10% of the total water pumped is lost. Well, we had a substantial loss of about 4 million gallons that month. So I sent one of the guys, I consider my bird dog out. And he worked hard and within about five days, he found a significant leak in a 12-inch distribution line that runs along Kellogg. The guys went out there and did a great job fixing it. And then one, there, here they are, here's George and Nick out there working. They did a great job. We got it fixed in one day and the next month came in, we didn't have a water loss like that. So it was what we were looking for. Another item that we, project that we did that also is water and drainage. You may remember it on Facebook when we had the little blow up about the drainage across the street here on Santa Fe and Main. We knew there was an issue there prior to that and we had planned to make some drainage upgrades there. In fact, replace that culvert. We were waiting till they got a little farther down along on their construction, but with all the excitement, we decided we'd jump on it right away. And within a couple of days, we got that squared away and we got some positive for us after the negative for us. That's why it's nice getting. And on the fleet side, we, we got the new Salt Dog Sand Spreader that council approved in November. We got it and loaded it up on the truck and got a lot of good use out of it during that cold snap. On streets and roadway, you heard, the council heard about the street maintenance RFP tonight and approved that. We filled lots of potholes. As I stated before, we had a brisk winter storm response. It was cold and about as soon, every day, every day it seemed like as soon as we got the roads cleared, it would jump about two inches, almost three inches. But I feel like the guys did a really great job keeping the roads clean. They put in a lot of dedication, a lot of hard work and I, they're greatly appreciated for it. And along with putting that salt and sand down comes the street sweeping to clean up those roads. At the wastewater facility and the sewer, we replaced the wastewater samplers. Those items that the council approved two, three meetings ago. And something we're always proud of and we've been doing this regularly is meeting all of our requirements with KDHE, which is obviously vital to our licensing. Down here in this picture, that's George Romero. He did a, he and Nick and Sean did a water repair over on Industrial. George does a great job with concrete, so I had him pose for a nice shot. Second quarter preview, we're going to rehab the pneumatic air actuator lines at the wastewater treatment plant. As I stated before, we're preparing this pool and the splash pad for opening. We've got, we just got 12 new benches in for Linear Park today. Those are the items that were approved by council, I believe, two meetings ago. And we hope to have those in within the next two to four weeks, depending on when we can get the concrete contractor in. And then another thing that I want to, want to tackle is we've got some drainage issues on industrial road at the very end of the cul-de-sac fills up with water and then we've got a, a gutter there that doesn't drain well and it fills up. And I've heard a lot from the residents, the business owners there. So we're going to tackle those this second quarter and hopefully take care of them for good. That's all we have. Any questions?
Do we have anybody doing weed control as far as spraying and stuff for dandelions?
We, we try not to spray any pesticides on our playground, on our parks because of the kids playing on it and then it's possible, possible negative interactions with the, with the pesticides and the weed killers.
Red population.
The red population. So no, we have not. If that's something council would like to see done, we, we can look into it. But we try to keep the, the heavy weed killers and pesticides at a very, very minimum.
And are any of my, are beneficial, beneficial breed for the pollinators as well?
They really are for the pollinators. It's something we did shorter and shorter on our pollinators.
We had two in Leeds Park there. We've got the, I don't know what it is, it's got those boards wrong and I don't know what that.
Really?
Board where it looks like a portion cord or something.
Oh, the, the.
Bachi ball.
The bachi ball. Does that need to be, we have, the guys went overweeded.
I haven't seen anybody use it, so I don't, I don't know what it.
I've not seen anybody use it either, so I don't.
Yeah, it's part of the, part of the items that can be checked out at the pool in addition to the chess set that's there for the.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that, that being a.
It's something that, that we can look at moving out because I, I think it's only been used like five times and that was back when Kyle managed it twice.
I just didn't know if there is a way to make it, lift that into like a shuffleboard thing with some sort of surround tiles or something?
I'm sure we could, yeah, we can definitely look into it. We did see kids playing chess with the massive chess set last summer. Brian and I were at. Okay, yes, we can definitely look into that. Okay, yeah, definitely look into that. Anything else?
Thank you, Bruce.
Thank you.
This will be the first quarter of 2021.
No idea, we're still what?
And quick update, over this first quarter, we saw a brief increase over the 2020 quarter one, 50% over single-family housing. This is a percent increase over last year. These are permit values and project valuation. The totals are at the bottom. This is just the highlight. We did have two multifamily building permits pulled. This is our total. Project valuation, that's add to the city, 2021 first quarter. Nuisance abatement, this is a sort of a graphic map that shows concentration of nuisance abatement. First quarter, we did have one nuisance, one environmental and three other for a total of five. Last year, we have a total of 60, so we'll just see how this plays out. Obviously, we had several empty habitations and as the weather warms up, we always have mowing compliance issues that we'll try to stay on top of. Residential, these are updated numbers. Arbor Creek at 35 for 86% available for sale. Cloverleaf, 50 lots sold. That means it's packed out, totally done, we're moving on to phase two. Elk Ridge, 67 at a set, oops, excuse me, 77. So that means 13% left, only 10 lots left for Elk Ridge. Rustic Creek is underway, 106 lots total. Commercial, so they did hold building permit for the Hampton. It's valued at $6,250,000 in valuation. The permit was $19,000. Brahms is ongoing as everyone can see when they drive down the frontage. We met three times. Planning Commission met three times in the first quarter, January, February, March. We'll continue to meet. We had a preliminary platform recall addition, final platform recall, voting on chair, vice chair and economic report, subdivision regulations in February, comprehensive plan review is in March. That's it for me.
We can't match, you got stuff back to follow there.
All right, we're having to switch to a separate slide because I.
Because it's so big.
No, no, no. Technology foiled me and I, when I was uploading our finance data into OpenGov, some of it didn't transfer because we had expenditures for paying off, paying out those state grants for the COVID stuff and that they weren't showing up on the report. So I had to, I had to have Thatcher, I'd redo this and give Thatcher data for me. So this is just our beginning of any fund balances for all of our funds. We had, first quarter, we of course got our first half of our property tax. So that's a big, probably the main reason why we have a fund balance overall. Water and sewer are down, well, sewer is down slightly from the beginning of the year and water as well because we had, we did make our first half of our old debt payments during the first quarter and those, we won't, we won't, we'll have small payments due at the end of the year than we normally do because we're, we refinanced that debt. This is just a graphic representation of those fund balances. This is for general fund in red, street fund in purple and bond interest in green. And then here, next slide will have, this is not working. There you go, there you go. That's the water and sewer fund, fund balance. This is just during, at the end of the first quarter versus the same time in the last three years. So this is the general fund revenue expenses for, for the year. You see here, we've received 41% already of our budgeted tax, or our budgeted overall revenue in the general fund. And through one quarter, we're only at 21.64% of budget. So we're in good shape there. And that does include a quarter of the transfers that we had scheduled. And there's, those are not technically operating expenses. That's just transfers to the funds as determined by our 2021 budget. Trying to advance it. This is just a graphic representation of where our power property tax revenue has grown, grown year to year since, back to 2017. Most of this, most of this is due to growth in valuation, although we did have, I believe we did put two mills back on in the 2018 budget year. This just shows the growth of our sales tax through the first quarter back to 2017. The green is our city portion and that includes traditional sales tax and compensated use tax, which is taxed collected outside the district, usually it's internet sales. And the blue is the shared tax we get from the county. This is just showing where our money comes from as type. So you see 58% of it, property tax, 31% of sales tax and the biggest remaining chunk is franchise tax. And that's just another graphic representation of how its revenues have grown since 2016. This is a breakdown of expenditures by department, by department within the general fund. Overall, you see the police administration, that's the biggest single expenditure by cost center. And that's just a graphic representation of the same data. So it's, it's a big, it's our biggest operating expense.
What, we didn't get more than 100%? It adds up to 25.
Yeah, that, that graphic's off. I left out the transfers because, I need to redo that, but yeah.
You added that really quickly.
This is the same for water and sewer. As you can see, we're 21% of budgeted revenue, 24% of budgeted expenditure. Just shows there that we, we've recovered fund balance from where we had dropped off last year. And that's, because we haven't really changed the rate structure at all for sewer, this is pretty much because of new water customers, that increase in growth. Same at sewer, we're 25% of budgeted expenditure, 28% of budgeted, or see, 25% of budget, 20, almost 26% of budgeted revenue, about 28% of budgeted expenditure, but that does include the debt service payment and transfers out. So for operating position, we're right where we need to be there. I'm trying to click this, I promise. And that just shows again, revenue expenditures over the last three years and growth in fund balance, again, due to, mostly due to new customers coming on. This is the sewer, the street fund. We don't do much with street prior to our maintenance projects in the summer. So that's why the percent of expenditures is so low compared to the other funds, the other main operating funds. That should be all I've got unless there's any questions. Any questions about financials, budget? Anything else you want to talk about? Awesome. I'm ready to go too.
Honorable Mayor and Council, this will be brief as Mike have pretty much hit a big chunk of it, which was the housing starts, but you can just notice the progress that's occurring at the Starbond site from the May 1st to the April, or I'm sorry, April 1st to April 19th, which includes, you can see that the ground floor on the hotels being framed out there. So that's exciting. Arbor Creek, just some of the new homes that you can see under construction there. And that's looking back to the north and west. Cloverleaf, just again, going gangbusters, certainly ready for phase two. Elk Ridge, slow but steady. There's always construction there. Rustic Creek, sewer's in and looking forward to the remainder of those improvements going in. I've got an ARCAT call Thursday morning. So hopefully we'll have some more, it'll be a review for the final fill check plans and we're also coordinating, connecting the Goddard Galleria into the ARCAT when it comes through so that we're not pushing the interior traffic out onto the frontage road or Kellogg only to get back off to visit the, the shopping places and dining establishments to the east there. The Brahms, you can see the progress there where it's been, it's given its raft and they're, it looks like they're putting their units on the top there for their grease control and HVAC stuff. Also want to remind you that the joint planning commission meeting on May 10th. So if you're unable to make it, please let us know as soon as possible so that we can get an alternate date scheduled properly. But now, May 10th, the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting. And what we have tentatively outlined is the aforementioned utility rate ordinance review and discussion on the 3rd, which Brooke spoke of, will have discussion and an update and possible requests for repair or replacement at the May 3rd meeting for well 7. The temp note series that we discussed earlier today for Cloverleaf. We'll have the budget workshop and then also the utility rate ordinance that's finalized with the council's review and comments from the 3rd. And then the community center follow-up, which I have a meeting scheduled on Thursday for that. So then from there, hopefully we'll be reaching out to the park board as the primary driver for, for that push. So with that, I'll turn it over to the governing board.
Larry, what do you have?
Well, just wanted to make sure that we're keeping tabs on the condemnation prices, are we checking in?
Yes, we are checking in, so we sent out a letter following the last governing body meeting about one oh one North Cedar Street, I'm sorry, one oh one, yeah, North Cedar, and reached out to the county to get a list of all the items that were in violation and to get a complete list, and Mr. Jason Griswold, he also received a letter stating that we need to follow up and be to discuss what to do. We've had a lot of people reach out about that particular property, no one seems to really care so much about Belly Brown's property, but Kipple's property, they were all very interested in, they want to know what's happening with it, they want to know if they could buy it from the city. I had to inform most people that the city didn't condemn it, we're moving, we're allowing Mr. Griswold to move forward. And if Mr. Griswold fails to act in a timely manner, I will be bringing it back before the governing body for condemnation, consideration again, but that would have to trigger state reviews, state statute, which requires us to have a resolution signed and then move forward again. But we're keeping track of it, we're giving Mr. Griswold as much time as needed to act on it, but it has to be within a timely manner, or else we'll, I'll bring, bring it back before the governing body for consideration again.
As far as talking, we give it to show some of the work.
That's a, I mean, that's really up to the governing body what they want to see, what's, what's considered a reasonable amount of time. Once he has a complete list of everything that needs to be evaded, really sixty days or ninety days, I think is an adequate time to actually start doing some work on the property, but that would, once again, be up to the governing body how much time they actually want to give the gentleman to look for it on it.
Do you know if you purchased that property?
No, the transfer of ownership has not occurred.
Probably able to check on that.
In other words, you're still dealing with Mr. Kipple on the property.
Correct, if there was any type of letters that need to be sent out by our own statutes and regulations, it would actually still go to Mr. Kipple, who currently resides in Washington State.
Do you want to give Mr. the long time?
Have you been in contact with the buyer, the potential buyer?
I sent him a letter, but he hasn't replied, so I have to follow up again, so I'll keep reaching out to see if I can get in contact with him.
Seems like he would be the kind of key person to check in, I mean, just if he's gonna buy it, you know, it's gotta be up to, it's not for him to get a VA log.
Yeah, as much as possible, I'm not sure what the requirements of VA log or dictate, but I think, I mean, as soon as I get a contractor
Yeah, they got inspection.
I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna require an appraisal. They're gonna
That's why we were okay with it at the time.
Yeah, so as far as him actually being approved to get that VA log, I think they would have to be contingent on how much income he's generating currently, and until that transfer ownership actually happens, I'm not, not sure where it really stands. So I'm just gonna have to keep following up Mr. Griswold to see where he stands.
When do we, as a governing body, want to say, if you don't get the financing done by this point, we gotta make a decision, we can't just keep dragging this out?
I believe we had anticipated June, because that gave him sixty days.
Okay, I got it.
I just know that every time I drive by there, I'll see anything going on.
Okay, Sarah, is that all you had, Larry? Michael?
Well, loved the reports tonight, guys, class act, good job, especially, especially Matt, I was just trying to keep it interesting, it was interesting, just trying to add to it, so, anyways.
I feel my role is to entertain.
Mike's did a really good job tonight.
Yeah, that was
I still vote my god.
Well, oh, and I, I registered to run, I will be running for this seat again, so, vote for Mike.
Brian?
Oh, yeah? Oh, so we were talking, you know, the danielion thing, right? How many of you did a danielion necklace when you were a little kid?
I made one the other day when I was pulling on my
Are you serious? I did it the other day? Do you remember those, though? Am I the only one that made one when I was a kid, like, third grade?
And the head things?
Yeah, the head things, you know? Well, that would've been like in my seventies, no. It was in the seventies, right?
Yeah.
Our children. That's right, we were making that things on daniels.
Okay.
So they're okay in the market.
I don't have anything, everybody, thank you for your reports, thank you for your quarterly reports, so. I look for a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Sarah, second by Michael, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.